About a business now putting up eight signs up and down the street for its sale. I just don't see these things happening. They've never happened in the past where we haven't, where we haven't allowed them to do any of this. They've never done it. Realtors, I think, we see where the problem is. Garage sales and Realtors both put up temporary signs. Why am I not worried they'll be up for 10, 12, 15 hours? Because Realtors have to pay for their open house signs. So they go, they pull them out of their trunk, they put them up, they open a house, they close the house, and they go pick them up. Otherwise, we would see open house signs all over the city blowing around in the gutters. We don't see that as a problem. So what I'm saying is, I'd rather, I guess what I'm suggesting, is I know everything we do can go a little haywire when we make it a little bit more lenient. But I guess what I'm saying is, why don't we try it and have the ordinance more match reality, where we have Realtors having regular open houses, we have people having regular garage sales, or we might have somebody giving directions to their wedding on the street, you know, trying to get people through, get people to navigate through. If we find that this explodes, if we find what you say comes true, where all of a sudden every business starts putting out signs for their sale, we'll amend it. But I was hoping that we could make it a little more lenient so that the people who are violating our laws right now are no longer violating them. They're actually within the letter of our ordinance.
And of course, can I make a, just a quick question. What if we did this and allowed it everywhere except in the Uptown Downtown district? Because nobody's selling houses in Uptown Downtown. What if you allowed this everywhere except Uptown Downtown Business District?
Or no Business Districts maybe.
Yeah.
That's fine, although very often Realtors want their signs, their open house signs, to come from a main thoroughfare. So you'll see on a corner of Palm Canyon, a little sandwich board pointing into a neighborhood saying "open house." So we can try it that way, but again, I think it sort of defeats it. I think they're going to continue to happen as they've always happened. The difference is, it continues to be illegal. So I'm saying, why don't we legalize it and see what happens? That's my suggestion.
Mayor, Councilmember Mills has been wanting to speak, then Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we didn't have a problem before because we never had to, we could, we could, we could single out Realtor's site by text, by, by what, it could be a real estate site. Now we can't do that. Everything gets lumped together. And I just, I would say for the, for the most part, we haven't had complaints because the Realtors do a pretty decent job of, of main, of putting them out and taking them back because they, they're expensive signs. Understand that. But you can't just do it for Realtors anymore. And if I would say, I would, to your point, JR, if we could, then I'd say, okay, well, let's give it a shot. But we can't. And so, and so even, I think we're going to open up the door to, to something that we don't want our city to look like. That's, that's the fear I have. And, and then you're going to have temporary signs, like, like a sale sign. Say if somebody has, has a sale in the, in the downtown, they're going to have a temporary sign out there which has no requirements for text or support or how it works, along with the portable signs that do have requirements for how they look and what holds them up and all this kind of stuff. They're all, all be mixed together and it's going to be, I, I just see a bit of a nightmare. So I, I, again, I, as, as Mr. Coors said, I appreciate where you're coming from, what you're trying to solve, but I don't think we can, I don't think we're going to be able to solve it with an, with a, with a, with an ordinance. So I would not be in, in favor of that, that modification.
Mayor Potem?
My concern also would be for the garage sales because they're not, garage sales go on for three days. And so, so this, this whole, it's become what we have, I think, I think it needs, we need to have an exact, when people are in business, they want an exact something to follow. And when you don't have an exact thing to follow, it's, it's very difficult being in business because you know this is what you're supposed to do and you do it, and you get your license or you get whatever. And when it's just kind of out there without any guidelines, it's, it's much more difficult. And I, and I think that I, I, I could not disagree more about handwritten copy shall be permitted in the signs. I, I think that's, I don't have as much a problem with chalkboards, that it could be a temporary thing, but I even have a problem with that. But I think that we have a standard that we've kept and we've not had an issue. And from my understanding, I thought the real, in speaking with the real estate people, that they were okay with this. And so...
That's true.
Yeah, so, so that's why I didn't know if which...
What I'm, what I'm afraid of is with what you're saying, so we're saying no more yard sale signs. So my problem is, we're taking away something that I guess was always illegal, and we're saying, let's keep making it illegal, but let's look the other way because we know they're going to continue happening forever the way they always have happened. I'm just saying for once, why don't we actually make it legal and see what happens? They're happening anyway. And if it becomes a problem, we'll, we'll deal with it then. I'm literally trying to legalize what already happens, and what already happens, we all seem to agree, hasn't been a big problem yet. So I'm just saying, why don't we legalize it?
And of course, and everyone, keep in mind, we still have to do cannabis tonight and get finished by six.
And I, look, it's a really well-taken point on wanting to legalize something that's been happening. And if we could do it without creating, making something legal that's never been legal and hasn't been a problem because no one, because if anyone put eight for sale signs on Palm Canyon, I presume Main Street would call us and say, you need to pick these up. So no one's doing it. Now we're saying, go ahead, free rein. And I just think if we're going to make this kind of change at the last minute on second reading, and I appreciate that happens, right? I'm not opposed to that, without talking to the Chamber and Main Street and the Realtors Board, doesn't feel right. That said, I really do, if there is a way we can figure out, without saying we're doing this for open house signs, doing this for open house signs, that would be a really good thing, right? If there is a way to constitutionally, and we've discussed this with the city attorney, we've discussed it with our last city attorney, I'm very open to trying to figure something out to do that. Because that's the biggest problem with what, with the constitutional ban, is how do we do that, make it legal without creating this problem? And I thought the mayor hadn't, you know, the idea of maybe we don't do it in commercial districts. But I think this is going to take some thought, which I'm prepared to do right away. But I'm really concerned just doing it at this point because of the problems it may encounter.
It sounds to me like where we are is going ahead and pass, or voting on this ordinance and looking at an amendment that we, because we can do an amendment anytime.
Mayor, if I might suggest, separate from this, it seems to me that Council, we could have administrative regulations on short term, obviously within the constitutional guidelines, that we could bring back to you as a resolution, and we could administer that as administrative regulation potentially. Because people do have to come in and get permits for garage sales and things like that, we could expand that somewhat to include what the signs could be.
Yeah, because, and there are, you know, there are big events where the signs are hopeful too. So we've tried to come up with a way to do this, and I think it's a good reminder that we'd like to do it if we can do it in a way that doesn't create the problems that...
I've addressed this legislative challenge previously in my legal career, and I'll be very happy to work with members of the new council, Dr. Ready, on formulating either administrative regulations or an amendment to this ordinance. Either can be done, and I, I know that the goals articulated by Councilmember Roberts can be addressed legislatively.
Okay.
And then on the, the other point, because, because the guidelines aren't, they're an attachment, right? So...
And, and...
And I think the language, Councilmember Mills, so they come back to council, because I think that's what was intended back in July when we delayed it, that we'd see them, right? So...
And, and I would only ask Mr. Mayor and members of the council, since we've taken this approach, per the subcommittee and per Councilmember Coors' comment just a moment ago, if there are any changes in the actual guidelines as they were presented on first reading, we'd be happy to take those now, with the understanding that if the guidelines change beyond what's expressed now, they would be brought back to the city council for revision per the new sign ordinance.
And my final question is, at the last, at the first reading, I had asked to make sure we had the one-year sunset for existing signs. So anyone who has a sign now, a permitted sign, that doesn't meet the new guidelines, doesn't have to immediately go out and spend money on a new sign. And that was a subcommittee recommendation?
I apologize. I believe that's been overlooked.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a very easy fix.
Yes.
We can simply add an additional section with respect to enforcement as opposed to the ordinance itself. And per your direction, from the date of, the effective date of the ordinance you're about to vote on, if it's approved, we would allow a full year, if I understand your motion, as an amendment for effectively grandfathering certain signs. Which signs would you like to grandfather?
For the portable signs, anything that...
Approved.
Approved portable signs, permitted portable signs, right? So if someone went with our approval and spent money, that they don't have to go get a new sign right away.
Understood completely. Is there anything else you'd like to add in that respect as grandfathered for one additional year of validity from the date of the effective date of the ordinance?
I have a question on this discussion. Are we going to allow the chalkboards? Because I think there was a good argument for that. We're becoming a very restaurant-heavy, small restaurants.
Well, many do already do it. So any number of them do it and they put their specials out or things like that. So I'm just, again, proposing that, you know, I guess what I'm finding is that cookie cutter perfection doesn't always work. It certainly doesn't work in zoning. So I'm, again, trying to add back, add back a little bit of flexibility for our, for our businesses.
I think the chalkboard thing is a good idea. One quick question here also, Mr. Cock, can I notice we took out signs which require additional waiting, sandbag, concrete block, et cetera, are not allowed. So are we, we're not going to be allowing concrete blocks and sandbags on the base of signs now, are we?
That's right. What's expressed in the design guidelines would be your current standard.
Do we really want to do that? Sandbags and concrete blocks and stuff on the base of signs to hold them up?
We rarely ever see it.
Okay. Well, I know, it wasn't there, we're taking it out. That's what I'm asking.
Well, the only change that I got to the guideline, actually, I take that back. I got Councilmember Mills' change to the, to the chart with respect to design standards and including the city council. I did not get the different character that you wish to instill in the design guidelines. I'd ask you to articulate that now.
You don't need to establish the character. You've got a sheet that says exactly what they are. So that's...
No, if there are changes, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and, and, and this is what they are. This is what we approved in first reading. All we're doing is moving this sheet to, we're just, we're just saying it's not in the ordinance. So if any modifications need to happen, and very well they could, and chalkboard could be one of those modifications. But right now, it's, it's not. It's just what's, what's on the sheet, at least, at least as I'm seeing it.
Everything you're saying is 100% correct. The only thing I'm trying to point out is that if council members on second reading had a design guideline point that they wished to address, I'm comfortable taking that notation, and the Director of Planning Services, if it's a vote of the council, will in fact modify the design guidelines in accord with that. And again, they're not in the ordinance, exactly as you say, Councilmember Mills, but it's not a bad opportunity, since we have the five of you here voting on the sign ordinance, to look at this document. And if there are changes, we'll take them. And if there aren't, that's fine too.
Mayor Potem?
We're in essence passing this as it stands, and then if there are changes, they'll, and, and the director will make the changes and bring it back to the council.
That is exactly the status quo. This was here, correct, on first reading.
This is getting very complicated, where I don't think it should be complicated.
Oh, no. I, I was trying to respond to Councilmember's stated concerns.
I was simply suggesting some changes. So if we like those changes, we direct them. If we don't, we don't. That's all.
Matt, Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'd like to do is make a correction in the, a grammatical modification in the 93 to 0.03 definitions frontage. I think it should say, in the, in the red portion, should say, in the case of any parcel, singular, that does not have, right now there's, it says parcels, so it's a grammar error. So just take off the S.
Isn't the second?
I read said parcel, but...
I know, but what is written did not say it.
Correct. And the amendment would be exactly what I read. I can read it again on the frontage definition.
I don't like to vote on stuff you read. I like the stuff, except I can read.
But aren't we...
By all means, go ahead and read it.
Aren't we voting on the black? It's not, the red?
The, the black is simply a clean version of the red line, that's right.
The black is a clean version of the red.
And it does, okay. I apologize, Mr. City Attorney. You did put it in, but...
I sure did. I take direction very well.
When our report's getting four colors, it gets complex. Okay, so we have a motion? We're, we're going to include the chalkboard, allowing chalkboards?
No.
No? Okay.
Not in my motion.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second?
So that we're clear, the amendments are two, per Councilmember Mills at this point, per Councilmember Mills' motion. First is the frontage definition, second is the design standards as they appear twice in the ordinance, modified and simplified as I read them earlier.
That's my motion, yeah.
And the one-year additional provision. Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve is made by Councilmember Mills and second by Councilmember Coors. The motion is on the floor.
Motion passes three to, three to two with Councilmember Roberts and Mills voting no.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to, to mention what my, my, my no vote is based on one thing, which I've said before, is I don't believe we should allow signs in the right way. And that's strictly all my no vote is, is about. I agree with everything else in the ordinance.
And Mayor, my, my no vote is simply based on codifying things that we know are going to occur, codifying laws on things that we have always occurred and will continue to occur, rather than cleaning it up and making it more workable for the people who need these signs. And so to me, that's not good policy. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item, item 4B on our agenda, which is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1943, amending the Palm Springs zoning code relative to zoning requirements and development standards for commercial, medical, and adult-use cannabis facility. Staff report, please.
Thank you. You already heard most of my staff report. I'm not going to repeat it. With respect to the cannabis ordinance, there were two red lines. The alternative red line was that of the subcommittee. And I am happy to answer any questions on that red line or on the original version, which was approved by the council. I, I should remind you that you have an interim urgency ordinance in effect, consistent with that first red line, the one that was just the full council, not the subcommittee. And the major difference there was the separation distances were set at zero per that initial interim urgency ordinance. Shall I continue?
Yeah.
Yes, there's no new staff report. I apologize.
Why you are talking about the urgency ordinance?
I'm...
Because isn't that, that's just there?
I'm just reminding...
And last week, we did the first reading...
Yes, you did.
Of the new ordinance. So we're only talking, I don't want to get confusion happening here.
I apologize.
So the urgency ordinance has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. We're just talking about what we passed in a first reading last, last council meeting.
Yes.
Correct.
There, yes, there were two red lines. The one that's before you tonight is whichever one you choose, because you didn't make a decision at the last meeting. There are two red lines before you, and I have two additional changes provided to me by Councilmember Roberts. He indicated at the last meeting he had a couple of changes. He wanted to present, actually, there are three, and I have those here and I'm ready to read them the way I did with the sign ordinance. That's all I've got. With respect to the first change, Councilmember Roberts spoke with me and wanted to modify the separation distance and separation distance requirements to be a section on separation distances and concentrations of use. And that would still remain section 93.23.15C. In your old agenda, that would be... It, it actually appears twice. There's the original council...
I know we have multiples of this. At the very back of the staff report, there's, I guess, the cleanest version of it. I, I'm not sure. I can't keep up anymore. But it starts, it's section 23, item C, and it starts separation distance requirements. And so I made some suggestions for modifying that. I also want, because we're making so many changes to this, I'm concerned that the public hasn't had enough time with it. And I'd like this to be a first reading again, just to give the, since this is new and this is all new territory for us, I want to suggest that this be a first reading to give the public more time with it.
And the changes that Councilmember Coors, excuse me, Councilmember Roberts wanted to add would relate to page 16 in the original council version and page 38 in the subcommittee version. Those are the same provisions, but the subcommittee made certain changes which appear on page 38 in highlight. So 16 and 38 are the two pages that you're looking at, if you're tracking in the original staff report. And the changes would be to the paragraph that is marked C, separation distance requirements. I see that you're all with me.
Also on 81.
And it's on 81 in clean form.
In the clean version, right.
In the clean version. Why don't we just go to the clean version?
Yes.
This is the clean...
And this, and by the way, the reason I want to make this first reading is because we're all scrambling over three versions. I can't begin to imagine what the public's doing in their head about it.
And I apologize, there are two clean versions.
Councilmember Coors?
Sure. So on, let's just start with the three recommended changes, if we can, that Councilmember Roberts is making, and...
Yes, that's what I was trying to do.
Yes, but let's, if we could do one at a time, would that be better? Or would it be, do you want to read all three?
No, that's exactly how I was going to approach it. I was just seeking the page numbers, and I gave you the red line page numbers.
Okay.
Now I'm going to give you the clean page...
Let's just use the, yeah, perfect.
Clean page numbers are page 60 and page 81, as Councilmember Roberts noted. 60 and 81. So for, that's exactly what I'd like to do. So the recommendation was to modify that paragraph C to read as follows. Separation distances and concentrations of use. No medical cannabis facilities or adult-use cannabis facilities shall be established, developed, or operated except in accordance with the following principles. All distances shall be measured in a straight line, without regard to intervening structures, from the nearest property line of the property on which the cannabis facility is or will be located, and to the nearest property line of those uses described in this subsection. These principles are not absolute. The city council will exercise discretion in their application to individual cases via modifications considered and granted by the council on a case-by-case basis pursuant to section 94.06.01b. Here's the first of the two principles. Count one, cannabis facilities shall be separated by a minimum 500-foot distance. Principle two, to prevent an over-intensive presence of cannabis uses in a particular area, there shall not be three or more cannabis facilities within any measured distance of 3,000 feet. In a discussion that I had earlier today with the mayor, he quite correctly pointed out that that's effectively saying more than two, that would be the rule. Three is the same as more than two, and it would apply to each additional cannabis facility that would come in. You would need the council permission. That's the first change.
Was that we allow the, you know, in a specific area, a person comes in and wants to open a lounge or a dispensary. The next person that comes in can open one 500 feet away. Anybody after that essentially needs to come in for approval on it from us. So that will kill the concern that the subcommittee brought about having five on a street. We can control that. And so what I said is, on the third, within 3,000 feet, they would then have to come to the council and get a separate approval for that. So my goal in this, by the way, is simplifying the process, having less staff time, and only coming to us when we start to hit that over-concentration potential. Otherwise, let two be close to one another, let three occur within 3,000 square feet, but beyond that, come to see us first. And that way, and the only, and the only issue, number two, person would come to us is if they wanted to be less than 500 feet away from the first one. Does that make any sense?
A little.
I think, I think Mayor Potem, I think Mayor Potem was next.
No, I'm, I'm...
Okay, Councilmember Coors?
I think I'm following this. Couple of things that jump out as I'm sort of thinking about this is, so this would mean less would be allowed in most commercial districts, but more would probably be allowed in Uptown Downtown. Is that, am I correct, based on the numbers we had before?
I'm going to defer to Director Feig. He's done some radius charts that he's...
Good, yeah, that would be, and my second question, just to let you know, does doing it this way versus the way we had in the first reading streamline and make the process easier? Because that's a compelling reason, if it does.
Let me start with the second one. I would like to say yes. It just depends on the quantity of applications we get where people are trying to locate within that 3,000-foot radius. We can't anticipate how many that will be. So it's, it's a little bit difficult to say that. Going back to your first question, if you could repeat that again, Councilmember, Uptown Downtown, would that allow more?
Right. And so this isn't, is it a straight line or it's a radius in all directions, Kirk?
No, it's actually written as a straight line.
Right.
That doesn't mean it couldn't be modified.
No, I just heard radius, so I want to make sure.
My, my recommendation was on a straight line. So the idea is, let's just use Palm Canyon. Within a 3,000 lineal foot run, you wouldn't have more than two that are 500 feet apart, and then the third one could exist, but no more than that in a 3,000-foot run.
But would that result in the radius? Just so I understand this, because let's say there's one on the corner of our old Starbucks in Tocqueets in Palm Canyon, just for argument's sake. It would be 3,000 feet, right, on Palm Canyon, 3,000 feet up Tocqueets, so 3,000 feet almost in any direction. So it's really the same thing. Okay, I just wanted...
Yeah, I don't think that would result in a greater quantity than what we had before with the 2,000-foot separation distance that we had in the previous version.
It's close.
And again, there are exceptions that would be allowed per city council approval.
Yes, okay.
Just gave off some more flexibility, I thought.
So this may make things easier, but is it an easier way for you to look at the distance requirements, I guess? Because that's, that's one of the goals, I think.
One of the things that becomes difficult for staff is it allows an applicant to go before city council to waive the distance requirement. It's difficult for us to, as staff, we're often asked to, if city council is going to waive it or not, we're asked to predict that. So it becomes a little bit difficult for us. What we can tell applicants is, here is what the standard is. Anything beyond that is a discretionary approval, and we can't give you any guarantee.
I would also point out, Councilmember Coors, under the subcommittee version and also under this full city council version, applicants still had the right to come to the city council.
Yeah, we, we wanted that in there.
Right.
I mean, you don't, you don't know for sure what we're going to do on waiving the liquor license census tract, although you can give them the history where we've... can give them the history where we've done it a couple hundred times. And we'll see what council does over time on this, and you'll get guidance on that. But that was, I just want to understand the thinking on this. And then I, two questions related to it. One was, if someone has a dispensary and in the same building or complex, they want to open an adjoining lounge, and we know that dispensaries currently have grows, they, you can have multiple uses in one complex address without having any distance requirements, correct? Is that not clear in here?
Certainly within one address, but I, I do think if we want to really underscore that principle, there's a legislative way to do that. I can draft some language.
We don't need to do it now, but okay. I just want you, but one address can do it right now.
One address would certainly accomplish.
It doesn't necessarily have to be one address. And so that is, that is really a concern.
We may have to fix that.
We need to make that one address, yeah.
No, 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 because it may be two buildings that the, the grow is in one building, dispensary's in the adjoining building, and, and then their lounge is going to be the adjoining building for that, if that's what that particular license holder wants to do.
In that case, they should come to us. That should trigger us taking a look at it.
I think the hypothetical that you're offering, Mayor Protem, vote, is common ownership of all the facilities, if I understood, Councilmember Coors comment.
Rather than addresses.
We could add a very simple exclusion from the distance prohibitions that are in this amendment, if you choose to adopt it, that it does not apply to situations where adjacent parcels are under common ownership.
And we're not talking, we're not talking distance in our industrial zones.
Well, right now, we are talking a minimum 500 in the industrial. That is a major change from the prior versions.
That is a major change, and, and we have, we have grows that are currently in operation and manufacturing that are underway that are not 500 feet from the other.
That was not my intention.
And, and Councilmember Roberts never said he intended to do this in industrial.
So we can take that.
We can easily, that, that should come out immediately.
My concern, though, if, on the addresses is, you know, people, there are buildings and there's, well, there's property, and people buy three lots next to each other to do grows or manufacturing and then build one building on them, and all of a sudden we're saying, oh, you can't do that. So that's, that was the thought on, if it's all under the same ownership issue. So I.
What if they buy, you know, four buildings on a block and want to put one in every one of them?
Right, now that's a concern. That should come to us. Industrial zones, I think, fixes my main concern.
Industrial is easy, but what I'm concerned about is if we don't make it address-specific or we don't force them to come in in a situation where they want to, where they want to violate the 500 rule, we, that's an easy call where we can say, someone comes in and says, hey, I want to do my grow next to my lounge, and there are two addresses. We can say, oh, okay, that's cool. But what about the person that buys four buildings or three addresses and now wants to fill all of them? To me, this, this brings your concern back of over-concentration. It, it leaves a loophole for that.
It also addresses what you said in the last, in the last item, which was, this is not happening, and that sounds too, and if it does happen, we'll deal with it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, let's leave it flexible and have it come, if, if, make it one address, and if it becomes more than one address, let them come in and tell us about it.
And, but that wouldn't apply in industrial, and anyone who's in process, it shouldn't apply for, right? If people have started, if people have licenses anyway.
I, I can legislate it any way that you direct.
But I don't know if anyone, does anyone have a license with more than one address?
I'm aware of, I believe, at least one that has multiple addresses, but I believe that particular application's been suspended. And I can verify with my paralegal whether.
Yeah, I just don't want to undo someone who's.
No, I, I understand.
That's all.
And whatever direction the council offers, it, you could do this another way, just to give you alternatives. You could have there be a presumption that it will be permissible if it's common ownership, but that it would still require council permission. In other words, the applicant would have the benefit of that presumption being codified.
I don't, I don't like that because then they're coming with a presumption and spending money, and then we're like, no, you just took a block of.
That's right.
A block of Palm Canyon away, and, and you're going to have opaque windows. So that's what we're trying to avoid. I, I think address is fine, as long as we're not, it doesn't apply to anyone who currently has a license.
We will certainly carve out industrial, and we will carve out projects.
We have to add schools.
With applications already on file.
We have to add schools back because I think when.
That takes.
I made that recommendation, the school distance fell out. The school distance should always apply. I think it was 500.
600.
State law is 600.
Yeah, let's keep state law.
Yeah, let's keep that. But I, I took the rest of them out.
Yeah.
Well, if I understand what you're saying, then is that there can be multiple events and multiple things happening at one address without having come to, to come to the council?
Yeah.
That's not clear in there. Let's make it clear.
They could have four.
I wrote it down exactly the way that Mayor Protem just articulated it.
Makes sense to me.
None of these are terribly complicated. I'll read them all when there's a motion, if there is one. I will note that it's not just schools for purposes of a playground complete discussion. It's, in, in the prior versions, it had been stated as protected child-related uses.
We don't need to read it.
The language we had goes back in.
Goes back in. And then I had made one other recommendation about doggie bags.
There, there's another recommendation that I want to share from Councilmember Roberts. It's actually applicable in two immediately adjacent subdivisions. It's 93.23.15, F3, and F5C. And the clean versions in your council packet are on page 66. And 85. So 66 and 85, and Councilmember Roberts wanted to modify first F3 and then F5C. I'm going to read F3 first. They're both the same issue. F3 would be modified to read, I apologize, they're not the same issue. These are, these are two separate issues. The first is architectural review. And that is as follows. Architectural review. All cannabis lounge facilities, medical cannabis dispensaries, and adult use dispensaries shall be subject to architectural review by the city council upon a recommendation by the Architectural Advisory Committee. The Architectural Advisory Committee and city council shall apply the criteria reflected in section 94.04.00 subdivision D. In effect, what Councilmember Coors' recommendation does is it simply adds back in dispensaries for architectural review.
So that was my recommendation, was simply that any of the public uses go back to AAC and come to council for final approval. The point in all this is that we control the way they look, and we make sure they're, we make sure that we're holding them to the highest design standards for retail.
Councilmember Mills, then Councilmember Coors?
Before we go on to the, the, the next one, why are you eliminating planning commission from the process?
Because this is really about aesthetics more than anything else. This is simply about the way they look from the street. So my, my, my goal is to, to move them away from looking like head shops and looking more like everyday businesses, retail businesses.
I don't argue with the goal, but why, why are we changing the normal architectural review process, eliminating planning commission?
Because it's just aesthetics only. It has nothing to do with zoning.
Why is the city council going to be looking at aesthetics?
It's a final look. It's a final look. Because, you know why, Chris? Why I'm recommending? Again, this is all new territory, and I think that we should be very much involved in how these places look and to make sure that they work well within our downtown. I don't want to be surprised, the way I am now, by the way some of these places look. I want us to have a say on them if we don't think that they meet the standards that we want them to meet.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just don't see why their standards should be different than the, than the shop next to them, who has to goes through, I mean, if you want to add, if you want to add on cannabis, if you want to add city council beyond, but I would think the architectural process should, should remain the same. So when they look at, so when they look at architectural review process in the other part of our, our zoning ordinance, it would be AAC, planning commission. Then if you want to add, if you, if you're saying, then bring it to council as well, that would make sense to me, if, if that's what you want to do. But I'm just saying, eliminating planning commission.
I'm, I'm suggesting that being, that it's pure aesthetics on the front of the building only, we probably don't need to put them through the planning commission as well. That one review is probably enough, and then we get to see it on the way out the door. That's what I'm suggesting.
Can I, can I ask, then, if, if, it doesn't say that here, this says, the, the architect, it just says that the architectural review, that it should go before architectural review. It doesn't say that it should go before the city council.
Because that's not my recommendation. My recommendation is.
Your recommendation that it should go to, before the city council also?
Yeah, to come, essentially, it can come on to our consent calendar.
We don't do this with any other business. Why are we, why are we subjecting these business owners to this additional, I can, I'll, and I thought we had architectural review just for the front. I didn't realize that we were going to, it doesn't state here, but what I'm hearing you say is that we, we're going to architecturally review the interiors also?
No, I'm not saying that.
But it doesn't say.
For the, because that's not, what you're looking at is not my recommendation. That is what's in, what I recommend it is what I worked out with Eddie last night. Don't read that, listen to him.
So the, but it doesn't say here, and that's what I'm saying, that it says, it does not say the facade, and that's what.
That's what we meant.
That's what we said last time was the facade.
Right.
We did not say the interior. It was just the facade.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject, it does refer to our existing architectural review criteria in chapter 94 of the zoning code. Architectural review only looks at the exterior of buildings. It does not look at the interior of buildings. So referring to that section of the code means that we will only look at the exterior of these facilities.
Okay, so, so then I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it just going to architectural review if it's just aesthetic, because that's why we have them there. Why do we need to take a second look, and why do we need to put our business people through that when we don't do it on drugstores, we don't do it on bars, we don't do it on anything else? Why would we do it here?
Councilmember Coors?
Sure. So first of all, including dispensaries, the same as lounges makes sense. I think that's what we sort of intended anyway, so that makes sense. And the reason for this, in my view, why I think they should come to council is, and why they're different, is you can't have any visibility from the street. These have to be opaque, blacked out, curtains that have to be closed at all times. So to have those in our commercial districts, we want them to look good. And so that's the reason. As far as not going to planning, if it would normally have to go to planning, it still goes to planning. It's, if it doesn't have to go to planning, someone's moving into an existing storefront but has to have some blockage of the street, the window, so no one can see in, that's when we're adding architectural, because normally you wouldn't need that for an existing space. But given the unusual situation where you, the state is sort of starting new, and these are new things, they don't want, you can't look into it, that's partially why we're doing the distance. It's sort of, we don't want painted black windows. I mean, that's the reason.
And if I can add on to that, what Councilmember Coors and Roberts are saying, because this is a, this is a whole new world for us. I mean, we've done drugstores for 100 years and grocery stores and toy stores, but this is a whole new area, so we need to watch it carefully. We may decide later we don't need to anymore, but at least in the beginning, we're going to have to keep an eye on this.
That's exactly my point. It's a new world, and, and this, we're asking these businesses to behave aesthetically differently than any of our other businesses. Until we are comfortable with the type of thing we are, they are doing, I think we should just see them. It can be as simple as our consent calendar, and they can fly through, but if we're not liking it, we can pull it off and talk about it.
That's my recommendation.
No, yeah, I mean, I think it allows us, after a few of these, to give guidance to AAC, so they know what we don't want to see. And it's because these are different. It's not someone moving into an existing store in a series of stores and not changing anything because they have to make it invisible from the street, and that's where it's unique. And until we get some, either criteria or a few of these, and AAC has no what we want, I think it would be good to get council direction on that, but not add more unnecessary steps.
And city attorney, I had a question. Did you look into the question I asked you about paragraph 5C?
Yes.
And, because those are.
This is not the change we're discussing now. That's the next change, the doggie bag provision, and I'll, I'll make those comments. Thank you.
And may I just, since that's my recommendation, may I just go through it? I think it'll go a little bit faster.
Okay.
So I'm suggesting that we create a doggie bag provision. So the current ordinance reads that you may not leave, that you may go into a lounge and you may, if you partake of something that you've purchased, you have to use it all or leave it. You can't leave with any, if it's open. So the provision, and I think that that would create a major problem for people, because then they're, they've just spent a bunch of money, they've bought a bag of candy, and they open that bag of candy, and they eat a piece of it. Now their choice is to weigh overdose and eat it all or throw it away. That doesn't make sense to me. So in, much in the same way that you can go into a restaurant and drink a half a bottle of wine, and you may then recork that wine and take it home and use it another time, I think that should apply to cannabis as well. So in my conversations with the city attorney, we found out that state law says as long as the resealing of a product meets the standards of state law, so we'll call it a state law doggie bag, I think we should use that provision as well, so that it can be resealed, put in your, you know, put in the trunk of your car, just as you would an open bottle of wine, and take it home or use it, you know, in your, in your private life.
Isn't, isn't that what we discussed at the last meeting, at the, that we would have that provision?
It was discussed.
For that very reason, is that, for the very reason that we didn't want people, you know, consuming just because they didn't want to leave it?
You're right.
Yeah.
It, it was discussed, but we had information from the cannabis attorney, which was correct, that certain kinds of open containers were flat-out illegal. I shared that with the council. We took it out. What Councilmember Roberts and I followed up with, with the cannabis attorney, is that the new regulations, and I verified this myself, they're one way until July 1st, then they change, but the point is that the state is going to allow a certain childproof standard with respect to these containers. And keep in mind, we are linking ourselves to the state here. What we're doing by Councilmember Roberts' proposal is we're saying, if it's okay with the state of California, it's okay with the city of Palm Springs. You want to take it out, as long as the container you have is an approved container, consistent with the state regs, we're good.
And I think that's okay with the, with the subcommittee. So I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this anymore. It's just, it is fine with the subcommittee.
Councilmember Roberts, if we just take out paragraph two, we're fine, I think. See, paragraph two is the one that says, that should not be, you can't take them, it has to be used on site. Paragraph 1, 3, 4, and 5 are fine, it looks like.
That's okay, but I think we need some wording that says, if you are going to allow it to leave, it has to follow state mandate. So I'm guessing these are just like prescription bottles that have a childproof lid on them. They can throw it into one of those kind of containers, whatever it is, put a childproof cap on it, and they can walk away with it.
Well, here's one of my favorite things to say at a council meeting. You're both right. The mayor's comment is actually regarding a provision of section F52 that should be modified to be consistent with your proposal, Councilmember Roberts. We should strike the verbiage that says cannabis and cannabis products shall not be sold or provided for off-site use, because while that's accurate.
And the sentence before it. And the sentence, look at the sentence before it. They must be smoked, inhaled, consumed, or ingested on the premises. We got to pick that out.
We have, we have to modify that provision. That's exactly correct.
So if we take out paragraph two and we, and paragraph four on what you gave us, the new thing we just gave us, it says, "Operators shall only permit patrons to leave the cannabis lounge facility with cannabis and cannabis products that remain in originally sealed and unopened packages or have been transferred by the operator for repackaging in a container that is compliant with all applicable state law and regulations." That's what, that's fine, sounds fine.
We could remove that paragraph altogether, make your two changes, and they are to F5C, excuse me, yeah, F5C3 and F5C5, and they relate specifically to, in the first instance, unless repackaged in a container that is compliant with all applicable state law and regulation. law and regulation, and in the second instance, or have been transferred by the operator for repackaging in a container that is compliant with all applicable state law and regulation.
Boy, does that get complicated. So that means the operator goes home with you, with your, with your open bag of candy?
No, the operator does the transfer. The point is, the sealing of the container may actually come into play here.
I think it does. I think that's what we're after. We're after that the, that the vendor or operator can throw it into a package that is considered childproof and the person can then walk out the door. I just, I need to say this because I wondered where the original provision came from, the concept of not being able to leave with leftover product. And my understanding, and I did not get a chance to speak to the police chief on this and I wish I had, but things are moving fast on this. His concern was that if people leave with product, then they may use product on the streets, or they may, they're walking out of a building with like an open beer can. And that, that I understand, but I, but I think if we can reseal the product, the law says you can't use it on the street. The law says you can't walk in here and use it. The law says you can take it home, reseal it, take it home, just like a bottle of wine. And my concern is if we went in the old direction, we'd have people standing in lounges, overconsuming, which would completely defeat what the chief's concern was, so that's where this came from.
I think we're in agreement with you.
Okay.
About most of us.
Okay, yeah. Some will agree.
I need, I need to get direction on the architectural review component of this. Councilmember Roberts was saying add the dispensaries, what's the council's preference?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Other than that, I'm good with it.
Do you want to see if there, do you want thoughts on the, I'm fine with doing the-
I'm also going to, I apologize for interrupting, I'm going to take out that paragraph two that the mayor highlighted for us.
Yes.
Because it's inconsistent with the change we're making for Councilmember Roberts.
That's important.
And I apologize, Councilmember Corrigan.
And then there's the issue of, instead of having the different zoning, doing 3,000, 500-
Oh, I'm going to read all of that for you.
Okay.
I have a list.
100 square feet in the industrial zones.
I'm going to read you the, I'm going to read you the list.
Yeah, because that was my concern there.
So first of all, we're going to have an exclusion from both of those principles for common ownership of a single parcel at a single address. That was the way that the council came down. We're going to say that there is a carve-out from those restrictions with respect to applicants that have applications being considered by the city now, as of the date of the adoption of this ordinance. Actually, it'll be the effective date, I suppose. And then we would also have state law with respect to schools and those child-sensitive uses. And finally, we would have the industrial zone exemption, that in an industrial zone, none of these separation distances apply. I think that's all of the changes the council wanted, and I've also got Councilmember Roberts' two changes and the mayor's single changes I indicated.
So one question, sure, thank you.
Darn.
So it's just clear, already clear in there, that if an existing adult-use dispensary wants to include a place for people to consume as a lounge, they can come and do that, right?
I'm sorry, I was typing, would you mind asking me again?
I'll never remember, I don't know, no. That if someone has a dispensary, they can also have a lounge on the premises.
If they are properly set up for that and in compliance with all applicable law.
Yeah, yes, of course, yes, that's allowed. I was just looking at some of the requests we had, so we're addressing at least two of those now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve may be by Councilmember Foote, do we have a second? Councilmember Corrigan?
And that would be the, the subcommittee red line as modified here today.
And that's the subcommittee that's making the motion and seconding it.
And this, and this is the second reading?
This is the second reading, I'm not troubled by these modifications.
Yes, because, because we are really behind. We, we need to start issuing licenses.
Well, he can, because we already have the emergency ordinance and he is able, he's already issuing licenses.
Well, I don't see any people lining up to comment on this topic, and it's been on our agenda twice, so I don't see any reason, and I don't think the changes were substantive enough not to make this more than, do you consider the changes substantive?
I completely agree with you. I completely agree with what you're saying.
All right, I'm fine.
Okay, motion to approve the second reading of the adoption of ordinance number 1943 in many of Palm Springs zoning code relative to zoning requirements and development standards for commercial, medical, and adult-use cannabis facilities.
Motion passes 4 to 1 with Mills voting no.
You know, it's odd, it took us twice as long for signs than it did for cannabis.
Yep. Okay, let me see where we are now here. Wait, wait a minute, I've lost my, I've lost my agenda here on all these papers. Sorry, Jenny, do you have your copy? I've lost my agenda page. What's next on the agenda? I thought it was, but I couldn't find it.
Okay, at this time, we will take a recess until 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Hi, thank you.